Oh yeah.
They're gonna be in spirit, Nick Lowitz throwing eggs. They're gonna improve the school budget, the school board has.
That's really scary.
Call any to order. Item number two, approval of minutes of May ninth, 2012 to May fourteenth, 2012, two sets. There's no objections or requests. It is suggested you approve the same as written. No objections. Item number three, approval of warrants. Suggested motion. Move to approve and sign warrants number sixty-five through seventy-eight in an amount of eight hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars and forty-six cents.
Motion.
Motion made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item number four, chairman's comments. I have none. Item five, monthly reports.
I have none.
Myself.
None.
Right. Pro. Sure. John. Item six, open forum. This is a portion of the agenda where the public can speak to any items on the agenda that do not have a public hearing. Please stand and state your name before stating the nature of your business. Start in the back row? Next row? Front row? Decided on? Lady? Mine? No.
I do actually, I have one thing I want to talk about. This is not intended to do anything more than just plant a seed for an economic vision that I've been thinking about for a while for the town of Lincoln. I do understand that this is something that the town manager needs to be moving forward with, but I would simply like this to be an item of discussion for the future. Ruth, I'm gonna ask you to correct me if I do misspeak, okay?
Sure.
Currently, the town of Lincoln does receive two large TIFs. One from LP and T and one from First Wind. The way I understand it, Ruth, we the First Wind TIF can be used to offset any TIF offset in the budget. Is that correct? Any current TIF offsets that we have?
Yes. For instance, right now, some of the stuff we're paying with the Lincoln Paper and Tissue TIF, we can move it over and have First Wind TIF pay for that and then dedicate the Lincoln Paper and Tissue TIF for economic development projects.
Okay. So if we were to take all of the TIF offsets that are in the budget and dedicate the First Wind TIF alone to paying for those offsets, that will free up the LP and T TIF for a separate economic development project?
If it's an approved economic development project that's listed in that TIF contract, yes.
Okay, thank you. What I would like to see in a future discussion, and again, this is something I believe that the town manager should move forward with, is currently, I think we need to be encouraging more economic development in the town of Lincoln. I think that years ago, there was some discussion, and I know it's been put on the back burner, I'd like to move it back to the front burner, the development of an industrial park out near the airport. I know that will require an acquisition of land. I know it will require the moving of, or the creation of water and power and sewer in that area. But, you know, I have to repeat something I heard Councilor Whalen say a couple of meetings ago, where he made the statement, "If you build it, they will come." I just think that vision-wise, we need to exercise more vision as a council and we need to try to attract more industry to this town. Long-term, good-paying and sustainable jobs, and I believe that an industrial park will go a long way toward doing that. Now, this may be something that blows up in our face, but unless we make a gamble, unless we invest in the town of Lincoln, then I don't think anybody's going to come. So, I would like to see something, some plan developed in the near future and brought to the council for council approval, for voter approval, so that we can move forward, hopefully, within the next year of making an industrial park a reality in the town of Lincoln. And that's all I have on that.
Oh yeah, start here. I just wanna say that I'm gonna look up staying from item forty-two tonight on the voting.
Okay. Item seven, special notice, there are none. Item eight, consent agenda. All items marked with asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council makes a request. In which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Suggested motion. Move to approve the suggested motions for items number eighteen through thirty-four as presented. Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item nine A, public hearing. Lincoln Regional Airport Acquisition slash Special Election. Suggested motion, move to open a public hearing for the purpose of hearing oral and written comments on the proposed Town of Lincoln Order 2012-01, which will result in a special referendum municipal election being held on July thirty-first, 2012. Move to open. Motion to be made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. This is a public hearing on the Lincoln Regional Airport Acquisition, Special Election. You have any comments? Counsel.
David, you're in charge of this thing here. If we put this, is he gonna hold this property for us?
Probably not, if somebody comes up with some money.
So we could, we could put this out for the voters and say they vote on it and then the next day, or just a week before we vote on this, he could sell it.
We'll have a purchase and sale agreement shortly.
Okay.
If we can come to a price that's fair for both of us.
Okay, so there will be a purchase and sale agreement signed so that it can't be sold while we're in the process of...
And then that purchase and sales will be contingent on the vote at the end of July.
Any other comments? Questions? Post-public hearing. Item ninety, adoption of Town of Lincoln Order number 2012-1. Suggested motion. Move to adopt Town of Lincoln Order number 2012-1, authorizing the appropriation funds in the amount of two hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred five dollars for the purpose of financing a land purchase of Lincoln Regional Airport. Motion.
Second.
Motion to be made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item nine C, placement of question on ballot. Suggested motion, move to place the following question on the July thirty-first, 2012 Special Referendum Municipal Ballot, as listed. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item nine D, order poll opened. Suggested motion, move to order the polls open from eight AM through eight PM according to Title twenty-one A, M.R.S.A., Article Two, Section six twenty-six for the July thirty-first, 2012 Special Municipal Referendum Election. Motion. Second. Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item nine E, direct registrar voters to sit to deliver voting lists. Suggested motion, move to direct the registrar voters to sit and register voters and make corrections to the voting list from eight AM to twelve noon on July twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and thirtieth, 2012, and while the polls are open on July thirty-first, 2012, according to Title twenty-one A, M.R.S.A., Section one twenty-two, subsection six A, and also consider to extract a supplemental voting list to the elections prior to opening polls. Motion. Second. Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item nine F, sign warrant for special municipal referendum election. Suggested motion, move to sign the warrant for the special municipal referendum election scheduled for July thirty-first, 2012. Move to sign. Second. Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item nine G, appoint, appoint election wardens for special municipal referendum election. Suggested motion, move to appoint Shelley Crowe as warden and Jemaine Mayo and Melissa Quintero as deputy wardens for the July thirty-first, 2012 Special Municipal Referendum Elections. Move to appoint.
Second.
Motion to be made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item ten A, public hearing municipal section two thousand point six point eight and two thousand point seven point zero five one two. Suggested motion, move to open a public hearing for the purpose of hearing oral and written comments on the proposed amendments amends to be made municipal code General Assistant Section two thousand dot six dot eight and two thousand dot nine. Move to open.
Second.
Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. This is a public hearing on the Municipal Code Amendments. You have any comments? Questions? Counsel. Post-public hearing. Item ten D, amendment Municipal Code. Suggested motion, move to amend the Municipal Code on a proposed amendment to the Municipal Code General Assistant Section two thousand dot six dot eight and two thousand dot nine. Motion.
Second.
Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item eleven A, public hearing Municipal Code Amendment to Section thirteen oh two Building Code. Suggested motion, move to open a public hearing for the purpose of hearing oral and written comments on the proposed amendments to Section thirteen oh two by repealing and replacing the previous building code with the recommended M-U-B-E-C language as required by July first, 2012 for the municipalities with populations over four thousand residents as attached. Please open.
Second.
Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. This is a public hearing on the Municipal Code. Any comments, questions? Counsel.
Dan, how much is this going to add to your workload, these new codes?
A significant amount.
How much of an impact is this going to have on building, any expansion, construction in the town of Lincoln?
Everything except for repairs now has to be permitted.
Thank you.
See, this is your baby now, Dan. This, is it Mubeck?
Mubeck is out.
People that are building now, in the state's effect, say they start today and in the state's effect, July third, do they go with the old? The old? You know what I'm trying to say?
Old codes?
Yeah, the old codes.
Yeah.
Or do they have to start right off with these new codes and start to build them over?
Any permit pulled prior to July first, we stay with the old, even though we are actually adopting it tonight. For enforcement purposes, after July first, we're gonna start any new issued permit.
So if somebody pulled a permit today?
That's correct.
For a new home, how long does he have before, say he doesn't get this home done?
One year.
One year.
Yeah.
Then after one year, if that house isn't done?
Significantly not.
Okay, just say you pulled a permit and did nothing.
He would, he would have to honor the new codes after a year. Under the new code, just for clarification, you only have one hundred and eighty days from the issuance of a permit to start work.
And this, this is more, you're gonna be inspecting more now?
Very much so, yeah.
I tried to read through something, I don't understand a lot of it.
No.
I'll be honest, I didn't understand. But it is a lot more.
Dan, how well received is this been?
It's mixed. We had two public meetings. The first night went very well, but honestly, I didn't really have any builders, any of the builders in town in that meeting. It was a couple of residents and other contractors, like earth movers and electricians, that are kinda impacted on the outskirts of it. Homeowners are impacted directly, but the second night was builders and it was very poorly received with builders. Lot of negativity, but I just wanted to let them know that we'll work with them through this, so.
How about your fellow CEOs?
In other towns? The thing is, the other towns that I've been in contact with have been enforcing these codes for a year, two years. The deadlines they had were different than the ones we had due to our situation, so they're already a couple of years into it and they had no issues now. They said starting now was all the same. This is all very common.
Anything else for public hearing? Post-public hearing. Item eleven D, adoption Municipal Code Amendment to Section thirteen oh two Building Code. Suggested motion, move to adopt the proposed amendments to Section thirteen oh two by repealing and replacing the previous building codes with a new U-B-E-C as required by July first, 2012 for municipalities with populations over four thousand residents as attached. Move to adopt. Second. Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item number twelve, public hearing Fiscal Year 2013 Budget. Suggested motion, move to open a public hearing for the purpose of hearing oral and written comments on the proposed Fiscal Year 2013 Budget. Motion.
Second.
Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those. All those in favor? Seven zero. This is a public hearing on the 2013 Budget. Do you have any comments? Questions? Counsel.
Yes, I'd like to table the motion by the town manager, because at this point, we don't know what he's going to accept. And I can't see raising taxes for the amount we have here, if that's not what we're gonna need for these wages. Can you do that?
Is that what we wanna do?
Well, the problem I think we have, I may, I think it's, the problem is, most everything that we've done on that has been done in executive session, so I think that in order to have much discussion about any potential wages or personnel or names of personnel should be done in executive session until we vote on it and it becomes public. That would be my take on it.
Also, will we table that one, or?
Well, if you can, if there's a motion to table, then you'd have a
Table.
There may be a motion and a second, and then if there was, then you'd have a vote on it. It could maybe table, it may not be tabled.
Anything else for public hearing?
If you table that motion and you choose not to vote on it this evening, you do have item twelve C, which is the overall appropriation of that budget, so we would need to adjust that, I would assume. Because that's contained within that motion of the calculation.
Okay, anything else for public hearing? No, not for public hearing. Item twelve P, approval of fiscal year 2013 Department Budgets. Suggested motion, move to approve the town manager budget in the amount of ninety thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars. Book to approve. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Four three. Suggested motion, move to approve the current budget in the amount of hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred twelve dollars. Motion. Second. Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion, move to approve the community development budget in the amount of seventy-five thousand, one hundred and forty-five. Second. Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion?
Um, I'm gonna need some guidance here if I want to amend this dollar figure, and somebody can correct my math. I'll say it again, I've said it in a couple of other public hearings. I don't believe we should be spending three hundred and seventy-five dollars of taxpayer dollars to a private website for simply a link to a site. I went to the website, I looked at it, it's just a link in a whole list of links. I don't know what we're getting for it. I don't know what the benefit to the town of Lincoln is. I know it's only three hundred and seventy-five dollars, but I think it sets a dangerous precedent. Some rather childish comments have been brought to my attention. Will forego repeating those, but I'd like to amend this down to seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and take that money out. Seventy-four, seven seventy, and I think that's seventy-five, one forty-five, minus three, seventy-five. Thank you.
Broad, you would have to... Any more discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes four three. Suggested motion, move to approve the finance budget in the amount of two hundred nine thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars. Move to approve. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Six one. Suggested motion, move to approve the existing budget in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, ninety-six dollars. Motion. Second. Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion, move to approve the code enforcement budget in the amount of eighty-nine thou- No, that's Mexico. Okay. The code enforcement budget in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, twenty-six dollars. Move to approve. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Six one. Suggested motion, move to approve the police budget in the amount of four hundred sixty-six thousand, seventy-nine dollars. Motion. Second. Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Six one. Suggested motion, move to approve the I department slash E M A budget in the amount of four hundred fifty thousand, one hundred eighty-three dollars. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Six one. Suggested motion, move to approve the city building budget in the amount of six thousand, two hundred thirty dollars. Motion. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion, move to approve the utilities budget in the amount of three hundred twenty thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars. Motion. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion, move to approve the public work budget in the amount of six hundred sixteen thousand, one hundred seventy-one dollars. Move to approve. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion, move to approve the transfer station budget in the amount of five hundred eleven thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars. Move to approve. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion, move to approve the landfill budget in the amount of twenty-four hundred. Move to approve. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Six one. Suggested motion, move to approve the general assistant budget in the amount of twenty-five thousand, nine hundred sixty-five dollars. Motion. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Suggested motion, move to approve the cemetery parks and recreation budget in the amount of two hundred twenty-four thousand, two hundred forty-seven dollars. Move to approve. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion, move to approve the Dallasville Community Center budget in the amount of thirty thousand, two hundred and one dollars. Move to approve. Second. Motion to be made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion fails two to five. Suggested motion, move to approve the library budget in the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Six to one. Suggested motion, move to approve the personnel budget in the amount of seven hundred twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Motion. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion, move to approve the airport budget in the amount of four thousand, one hundred twenty-nine dollars. Motion. Second. Motion's been made in second. Is any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion, move to approve the debt service budget in the amount of two hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred ninety-eight dollars. Suggested motion move to approve the debt service budget in the amount of two hundred thirteen thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Booked approved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion move to approve the capital improvements budget in the amount of eight hundred thousand six hundred forty-six dollars.
Booked approved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Suggested motion move to approve the tax keeping and financing budget in the amount of nine hundred forty-five thousand seven hundred one dollars.
Booked approved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two.
Yes, we need to take a break. Have to recalculate.
Yes, please.
Yes. We'll take the, uh... Ten minute? Ten minute recess.
What are we calculating?
Uh, you gotta do that.
Yeah.
You gotta tell the...
That also reaches to the decision in a pretty real valid area to close it up.
But July first, we'll draw the money, so... The plan will be to close it and see what happens. Can I just... Can you come back to me?
Paul, can you back your order? Is that...
Please, yep. Before we get into the items we haven't voted on yet, there's one budget that's already been passed that's affected already, that's the tip budget. When you change the total overall budget, you change the minority, so that tip budget then is affected. So, we'll have to re-go with the tip budget, so... That being said, revenues have been decreased by the rental agreements that we have and the revenue party rentals that we anticipate we see, as well as the, um, uh, offset from the reserve account. So, that's why the difference in revenue is one item that's not, that's not going to be affected. And the total budget has been reused by the thirty thousand eight hundred and... Thirty thousand two hundred and one. However, there's a couple of things that we have to remember about a building that we own, and that is that we've got wages in there that Teddy cleans, and so we'll have to reallocate the twenty-nine hundred and forty-eight dollars into the cemetery parks and rent budget because of Teddy's wages. There'll be another employee that we lay off, um, that was the overseer of the building. The sewer bill will still come, even though we don't have sewer, because if we shut the water off, the sewer bills still come. So, that will have to be absorbed through my utility budget. That's only three hundred and twenty years, so that shouldn't carry. And... That's about it for now, that I can think of right off the top of my head is something that's affected. Do you think of anything wrong that will be affecting?
Teddy has waters or...
They're not gonna have power or, you know, total power even if they...
They're not gonna have anything. If there be no power, there'll be no heat. There'll be nothing. So, there'll be some money that is already in the budget that you approve that we can't spend.
Suggested motion move to approve fiscal year 2013 revenue budget in the amount of two million nine hundred thirty thousand seventeen dollars.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I just wanna make a couple of comments. We started this budget process several months ago. Budget committee went through it. We've gone through it. We've had public hearing on it. It always causes, uh, not that there's anything wrong with that, it always causes, uh, issues on the total budget when you make one, one change, and that's what it's running into here. I'd be very surprised if we address everything tonight. There'll be something come up later that we didn't figure on. Been through this a few times. It happens every time we do this, and, uh... I guess there's not much we can do, because this is a process, and that's a good thing. Gives people a chance to go all the way through.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to add one thing to what Ron said. I am all for actually reinstating the, uh, the initial dollar amounts and going back to the, to what we had with the Ballard Hill line added back in. What I would like to see is a reduction in the heating fuel, uh, cost. We're budgeted for over sixteen thousand dollars, uh, to heat that building. For, Ron, how, how often do, how long do we heat the building in the course of a calendar year? Half of the year?
Probably.
Very similar to what you're gonna get out. Okay, so, almost sixteen and a half thousand dollars for half of a year, uh, just in heating fuel. That, just to me, is, is a, is a huge expense, and we, we have drained the, um, the reserve account on this. And, listen, I understand that Ballard Hill is a building that is used by the public. Ron, that's why I asked you last week. Is usage up? You said usage is up. The, the Haunted Hill thing, I think is a great thing for the town of Lincoln, and I think that if we can expand that, and it can be bigger, and generate more revenue, uh, in the, you know, in the years to come. And Ballard Hill is a perfect location for Haunted Hill. We need to have a serious discussion on what to do to save heating fuel in that building. Councilor Wayland made a point last week where we could shut off the upper, uh, the upper floor or the upper two floors, where, you know, we could do some linearization there to, to make the building more energy efficient. I would like to see this fuel bill cut in half, and I feel a lot better about going to the taxpayers every year and asking for this building to continue to be funded. I mean, now that the reserve account is tapped out, we're looking at thirty thousand dollars added to the budget every year that we're asking the taxpayers to fund for a building that is, that gets little use beyond Haunted Hill. So, again, I'm all for putting that money back into the budget and having a serious discussion and exploration as to how to make that building more energy efficient so we're spending less money in heating fuel in the future.
Any other discussion?
I would say the same thing. I'll echo Chris. I think it's a good idea. Maybe we can keep the money the way that it is, just in theory, but cut it down. We'll have this year to cut it down. And that will be reinstating all the issues that we're going on that for Ballard Hill issue. Can we do that?
Someone wants to go back and change? How do we redo that?
You would do that. Right now, you have a motion on the floor, and that is the revenue budget, um, with the decreased revenue. So, you would want that not to pass, because you want to leave it as is. Then, someone who would have voted in the positive would go back and make the motion to go back and revisit that.
So, we vote this one down? The current motion?
Right, because you've made an adjustment to the amount. Unless whomever made that motion, it would have been Sean Drinkwater, his motion would be, he could amend the amount, and then that could pass, and then go back and visit the other motion.
And then go back to the original amount?
Back to the original amount.
So, the motion has been amended back to the original amount?
Your second.
That was car parking.
So, we'll have to second the amendment? I second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Up the amended motion back to the original amount? Opposed? Six one.
We have one other thing we need to address, and that's the budget item that we voted on. And I think we have to reconsider our action if we did not approve that.
Right.
Somebody who voted on the prevailing side has to make that motion.
Run it out.
One of the five, you mean? So, we just make a motion, is that it? And I'll make a motion that we approve the Ballard Hill Community Center line in the budget in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred and one dollars.
Motion to reconsider your action if you voted on that. And it has to be, and then it has to be a second, and then you vote on that.
Okay.
And then, if you come back, we'll reconsider.
Okay.
Then get you back there.
Um, then I make a motion to reconsider our vote on the Ballard Hill Community Center budget. When the original vote was two to five.
Second. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. To reconsider the Ballard Hill Community Center budget? All those in favor? Opposed? Six one. Suggested motion move to approve the Ballard Hill Community Center budget in the amount of thirty thousand two hundred and one dollars.
Approved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Item number four C. Approval of fiscal year 2013 municipal budget. Suggested motion move to approve 2013 fiscal year municipal budget in the amount of five million three hundred seventeen thousand seven hundred eighty dollars, less the amount that could be reimbursed to the town by the main revenue services for the home state exemption, less the amount that could be reimbursed to the town by the main revenue services for the BETE program.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Five two. Item thirteen, authorized charge of interest on delinquent taxpayers. Suggested motion move to set fiscal year 2013 taxing date as July first, two thousand twelve, and to authorize the charge seven percent interest per annum on the fiscal year 2013 taxes, and set the delinquency date as November fifteenth, two thousand twelve, and May fifteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Motion. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
What did we charge?
Nine years, or this current year's seventy percent.
We charged maximum, huh?
Yep.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item fourteen, authorization of interest on overpayment of taxes. Suggested motion move to authorize the charge of pay three percent interest per annum on overpayment of fiscal year 2013 taxes as required by Title thirty-six MRS A, Section five oh six A.
Title four, authorize.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item fifteen, acceptance of prepayment of fiscal year 2014 taxes. Suggested motion move to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of fiscal year 2014 taxes.
Motion.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item sixteen, authorization to join tax club. Suggested motion move to authorize the tax collector to... In the tax club program according to the terms and conditions outlined in the Tax Club Program ordinance.
Well, that's... Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Warrants and dispersal policy. Suggested motion move to approve the following policy governing warrants and dispersals in accordance with MRS A, Title thirty A, Section fifty-six, Rule three, subsection two A, at...
Motion approved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item number thirty-five, removal of fire services agreements with surrounding towns. Suggested motion move to approve and allow the interim town manager to sign fire services agreements until June thirtieth, two thousand fourteen, with the following town's listed below as attached.
Motion. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item thirty-six, MMA nomination legislative policy committee. Suggested motion move to nominate... For us to be a term on the National Association Legislative Policy Committee, serving the years of two thousand twelve through two thousand fourteen. Item number six, ask for the actual motion. Item thirty-seven, acceptance of Penobstar Regional County EMA grant. Suggested motion move to accept the Penobstar Regional County EMA grant of radios and cages.
Value ten.
Three thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars for Lucas fire and police departments.
Move to accept. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item thirty-eight, acceptance of funding to conduct party controls for the Sprint. Suggested motion move to accept the Sprint flight grant valued fifteen hundred dollars to conduct, conduct party control. Term nineteen thirty, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero. Item thirty-nine, award the sale of nineteen ninety-five Johnson's Streets streetblock. Suggested motion move to authorize the sale of nineteen ninety-five Johnson's Streets streetblock to the town of Dover, Popper, for total of eleven thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Motion. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, just a question on that. I know we have heard that it was not, it was not cost-effective to repair. But I'd like to find out, did we ever go to solicit anybody to get a quote on what it would actually cost to get this thing repaired?
We have in the past, Joe.
Yeah, several times we have gone out and got, got quotes on whatever cost we had a unit. I don't know what Dover is gonna do with this. Uh, they've been over three times looking at it.
They came over and looked at it, you, you showed it to them?
Yeah, yeah. Told them everything was wrong with it, and I told them what it's gonna cost to get it up and running.
Very well. You're not so bad for me.
They're not, you know, they knew it wide open, their eyes wide open. They know, they looked at it three times.
Good. Can you sell my car for a little time?
Any other discussion? All who's in favor? Seven zero. Item thirty nine, A, suggest motion move to direct your trade partners to apply the proceeds of the eleven thousand five hundred and ninety-one dollars from sales of nineteen ninety-five Johnson's Streets street, one received against the principal amount due in 2007, Alliance Street Street. Motion? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All who's in favor? Seven zero. Item forty, award the Veterans Memorial Square upgrade project. Suggesting motion move to award the component to Joe Brown in the amount of six hundred in plumbing upgrade to affordable plumbing in the amount of one thousand, two thousand twelve Veterans Memorial Square upgrade funds to be allocated from reserve account and from the 2013 capital. The upgrade to the memorial square. Is it reserve account?
There is, I just can't think of the number.
Okay.
It is in the reserve account.
Okay. For me.
I'll get that information soon.
I got a couple of questions on this. We put it out last year. The way I'm reading this is that we put it out. Why did we not award it last year if we didn't have the funding? Is that? Do I speak to Dan about this?
You would speak to Dan about this because I was not involved in this process.
So why did this not get awarded last year? All right, let me sidle over. How many people bid on this last year?
Last year there were two bids.
Okay, why did we not award it last year?
Insufficient funds because the estimates from the year prior were lower than what we anticipated, so when all the bids came back, when the issue for the hot topic and things like that, it was more than we had available.
So we didn't have enough money to do the project? Okay, so now we budgeted for more money to do this project?
That's right. Plus the addition from the reserve from last year. The money side, I'm unfamiliar with.
So did we offer this to the two people that bid on it? Or?
From last year.
From last year?
No, we went back out to bid.
Why would it go, I don't understand why it went back out for bid. They were the only two bidders, and we stopped the process because we didn't have the money. Shouldn't we have just, out of good faith, asked them if, could you do it for this amount? Does it have, does it have to go back out for bid? It's kind of a slap in the face, I would think. They spent their time doing these bids, and we shut them off because we didn't, we didn't have enough money to do the project, but yet we asked them to bid on it. And now we got the money, or hopefully had the money, and we didn't ask them for us to see if, I mean, do we have to go back out for bid? Is that how things work?
When you open the bids, you recognize, you release all the information to everybody who's brothers to how that person bid, so the best solution is to go back out to bid and let everybody have an opportunity to rebid or to bid new. Because the people who bid, I don't know exactly who actually bid originally, but I believe they are the, some of the ones that bid this time. Is that true?
Both from last year bid this year.
Yeah, so the same bidders that bid last year.
Okay, so it's the same bidders that got it this year too?
Well, they didn't get it last year because we didn't know.
Okay, but I mean, so really I'm just talking nothing because the same two people got it this year?
Well, the same two people that bid, well, one of the persons.
Last year there were two bidders. This year there were three bidders.
So somebody new bid this year?
That's right.
Okay.
Everybody last year that was invited to bid was invited to bid again this year.
And then I see this bid sheet, and it doesn't even look like they bid on the same thing. Some bid using different things, some bid, you know what I'm trying to say? It wasn't a spec sheet, so really you didn't bid apples to apples, you bid apples to bananas. Am I right? I mean, I'm reading this.
They had, they received the same, everybody received the same bid specs that I wrote from the year prior. And then this year, each one handled it differently in how they wanted to bid that project. We didn't get specifics of, you need to use this much foam or this much C T S pipe or anything like that. It was up to the contractor to tell us how to do it. And where I'm the inspector, I, this year, I removed myself from sending the bids out because I wanted to be unbiased for the inspections of the process. Amanda Water actually handled the sending of the bids issue.
And she was in charge of, okay, this is good enough, their bid was good enough, they used enough?
I was on hand to clarify the bids, and other than that.
I just, I felt kind of bad where they spent the time to bid this out, and then we didn't even ask them if they could do it for that amount. But I see, and then I see one, because the Joe Brown's bid doesn't even say what it is, but the plumbers' bids have different, they're using different materials.
Yeah.
Each plumber uses so.
Right, and unfortunately, Joe was the only one that did the electrical, and I'm sure a different electrician would have decided to do it a different way as well. We didn't get down to the very specifics of how we wanted this job done when I wrote the bid specs last year.
But it's going to be done to, we're not going to have issues.
It's going to be done to code. Right.
Okay, I just felt, like I said, I just felt these guys took the time, and I didn't realize you have to put, so when you open a bid, you have to put it back out for bid?
Yeah, because you've let everybody know how this person has bid, so it's appropriate, of course, notify the previous bidders that we're going to rebid, but then you let everybody else intervene.
Did the job spec change at all from last year?
No.
So they actually do it, they got, they knew the bid, so now they have an idea.
Everybody had the same idea.
I know. It just baffled me on how they bid this stuff, and I just thought maybe we should have, you know, at least give the two people that both bid on it. Can I ask who the two people were? Was Joe the first person that bid on it first year?
Joe and Babon.
Babon bid it the first year?
Joe's been the only electrician in both years.
No, no other electricians?
No other electricians. We invited every electrician and every plumber that had a business in town to bid on this project.
Any other discussion? All who's in favor? Opposed? Five two. Item forty one, award the audit services bid. Suggesting motion move to award the audit services bid to Municipal Audit Services, to Municipal Audit Services P A of Levant, Maine, for a three-year term. Move to award. Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All who's in favor? Seven zero. Item forty two, authorize summons for Goding. Suggesting motion move to authorize Code enforcement officers to request issuance of summons to the state of Walter Goding to comply with local ordinance. Motion? Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Mike?
Okay, I just want to take a few moments. I got a couple of questions to ask. Who is the, well, say, the someone's going against? Who is the legal owner of that property right now?
In the state of Walter Goding.
Yeah, but who's Walter Goding's?
Peter Baldacci is the caretaker.
No, no, the son?
He has several sons.
Okay, yeah. So is this going against any one son or just the estate?
It goes against the landowner, which is the state of Walter Goding. There's no sole owner of the property.
There's no sole.
The estate still owns the property. The equipment on the property is owned by E E Goding.
My only question is, why would this be on the agenda for council to make that kind of decision?
For, if we take him to court, we're going to have to hire a lawyer to pursue this legally.
Under the town code rather than the state law?
This falls under both codes.
I realize that, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we could, he's in violation of both town ordinance and state law, so.
Maintaining a junkyard.
That's correct.
At either the state or the town.
Or the local.
Had we gone to the state, it wouldn't have to hire them.
I think it's still on the town to enforce that.
I think P A would have to, could be corrected, but.
If it's a civil ordinance, it could.
I realize, well, I realize the ordinance is, but there's also state law that requires you to have certain licenses to maintain the junkyard. And if the junkyard is defined as, what, three more unlicensed vehicles? And this will only have changed since I've been out here, but I think that.
If I could interject, the problem with the Goding junkyard is even if he did fall under state law and state licensing, his lot is not big enough to accommodate it per state law. He does not have space on the site to meet the requirements of the state law. In the past, when we sought action with Rose Bush and when we sought action with, James escapes me at the moment, I apologize, Edwin Goodwin, we had to go to the council to get approval prior to suing legal action against them. As the code enforcement department, we only have a certain venue, and after that, we reach that point where we do all the legal notifications, then we have to seek legal action, and we have to get council approval for that legal action.
I still want, I want to go back to what this gentleman said. You said if we go to court, so who would we be taking to court?
The state of Walter Goding.
This gentleman gave me a name, so there's no names.
Peter Baldacci is the caretaker of the estate of Walter Goding.
But I do know this week they have moved up two more pieces or.
Yeah, and I've been in discussions with Jeff Goding, who is the president of Goding, that is removing the equipment, but he did not meet the timeline setting, which they reapply.
Now, is there still, I want to think that when they sold to the concrete company, when they sold the concrete portion, he kept, didn't he keep a Goding sand and gravel as a business?
Couldn't I? I don't know.
Okay. Any other discussion? All who's in favor? Opposed? So five to one, one extension. Item forty three, authorize application for FEMA grant. Suggesting motion move to authorize the interim town manager and/or fire chief to apply for acceptance of signing a FEMA grant application for five percent match, service of obtaining fire equipment. Motion? Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Where would the ninety-three hundred dollars come from? That would be our five percent share.
We would budget that next year.
Okay, so it would be two thousand fourteen.
Providing, you got it.
I'd just like to see if Blacky can black it.
Any other discussion? All who's in favor? Seven zero. Item forty four, executive session. Suggesting motion move to adjutant executive session to approve, Title one, M R S A, Section four oh five six A, for discussing personnel issues. For tire. Second. Item seconded, all who's in favor? Seven zero.
Can I win here?
Same thing. CR of the executive session at eight thirty one.
Four, nothing.
Make a motion with suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, suspend the rules. Any discussion? All who's in favor? Seven zero.
Make a motion that we sign a contract with William Reed for one year at a salary of sixty-five thousand dollars to serve as our town manager.
Second. Made and seconded, any discussion? All who's in favor? Seven zero. Item forty five, future gender items. A.
Well, I would just, we had a discussion, and we're all in Valle Hill, and we do have councils, some councils, and we'd better start on that occupancy, but a committee to control on Valle Hill. Our car, our volunteer services.
Our volunteer services. So?
The other thing I wanted to bring up earlier, and this, and this went back to junkyards. You know, I was kind of, you know, same way with Sean, you know, I, you know, I've got a little bit of history with Goding and his son, and I was afraid they were going to go after, you know, one of the gentlemen there. Just for general knowledge, for those of you who don't know, Jeff Goding was a combat gunship pilot in Vietnam. So that's why I was kind of on the defensive, I was afraid he was going after Jeff. So that's my reasoning behind that. And on the other hand, you know, looking at, you know, a couple of things, I know we started up when Lisa was town manager, the trailer that used to be beside Melvin Olson that the people tore down, there's still remnants of that is still there, you know, it's just a pile of junk that tore it down. Pulled the steel framing off from under, left a pile of junk, so there's still asbestos and everything else laying there, and, you know, it's an eye has, it is almost as bad as looking at Goding's yard, but, you know, I kind of turned a deaf eye to the Goding yard. And at the same aspect, there is, you know, and I don't know how you could do it, like you look at some of the buildings, the old Jim Tilton Firehouse that burned three or four years ago, and then the tree that come down in the, yeah, two years ago, when they had the big, little hurricane come through here, but, you know, we can't control how people live. If they want to live in the junkyard, I mean, they're allowed to do it. And, you know.
So do you want any of this on the agenda?
Well, you know, I'm just kind of want to get any other people, any other council's ideas, so they would think of, but, no, nothing.
Bro?
I just follow up on that, I would say that would be up to the code enforcement, so to make those observations, and I'm sure he's working on it, and he can take care of it in a few time.
No agenda, I'm but to respond. I think our code enforcement officers do an excellent job of enforcing both local and state codes.
Sean?
Good. Good.
Item forty six.
I just wanted to clarify something for the record. I had Roy Carr making the motion on the contract town manager for one year, sixty-five thousand incurred, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay, and then I had seven zero, that was correct? Yes, okay, I was just trying to record it as we were moving. Thank you.
Item forty six.
One question on that, does she need an effective statute on that? Put it in, you know, he will stand on.
We already know.
Yeah, we know, but they don't.
Wednesday, Wednesday or Thursday.
Like Wednesday?
It's Wednesday, but day after tomorrow.
Okay.
She still got time to polish her shoes.
All right. Well, I have an election.
Item forty six. What would you do with your? Second. All who's in favor?
I want to get answers to this.
Okay, we have to pack this stuff, everyone. I'm sorry.
No, I need to go with this.
Bill, can I ask?
We can reflect official.
I have a name.